Please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent. Um, Dr. Dickenhoff?
I do.
May I put you on the side if that's okay? Can I ask me to come up and lead us in our pledge of allegiance and dedication? Please stand if you'd like and thank you in my apology service.
No, no, that's fine. In my mind, we never pray enough. Dear Lord, here we are tonight to look at what's best for our town. We've been inspired by our leaders who have stepped up and went to lead, show us, be able to make decisions, guide their thoughts, guide their wisdom, help them to be the leaders that you've inspired, to give them the gifts to be. Thank all those people that care enough about our community to be able to be here tonight, to be able to hear the business of what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and how much. We ask for your blessings, our safety, keep our community safe, keep it clean, keep it prospering, and allow us to retain our health so that each and every day we may look to you as our Lord and Savior for all those many blessings and for your incredible grace. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in its justice and moral.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No. Can I call a little bit off hard?
She was ready.
All right, well, welcome all to the meeting. I hope you had a chance to notice the precursor to the upcoming renovations. Although they are minor, they make a huge impact to our town hall. So if you didn't get a chance to see our new reception or information area, please take a look at it. The updates are phenomenal, and those are the same things that you're going to see come throughout our entire building. So that is huge. The employees are excited, but NAR gets to be our showpiece. But please stop by and check that out. So we will also do the item three additions and deletions. Aldo Womack Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to remove eight C and D. Um, well, C, we just got it Friday, and I have not had a chance. I don't think many of us have the chance to go over that. And we have a lot of strike throughs, and I would rather it be presented in its actual form before we have to go through it.
Is there any discussion on this? Um, Aldo Plasios?
You wanted a session on that, or what she just asked for another addition or deletion?
Um, on the additions, if you have any additional additions or deletions.
Okay, so I don't see the LGC here tonight?
Can we double check? They confirmed that they would be here.
Okay, you want to pick out the agenda and then move on if they're not here today?
Yes.
Okay.
Both sit down here, or we'll remove eight A.
You just removed two items. I don't know how far down you're going.
We're not removing the financial update because they confirmed that they would be here. Some of these cards won't check, so that is not to move down.
Okay.
These still stay in the same spot. I don't feel like we should remove these ordinances unless you guys are in agreement that you didn't get a chance to read them.
I'd like to have them tabled.
Okay. All right, well, we will, I'll extend the motion to approve the agenda. So we move to approve the agenda with additions or, excuse me, deletion of agenda items C and D.
So moved.
Second? Aldo, in like way. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is gonna be a very short meeting. Okay, um, we will now move to agenda items five, approval of consent items. The draft minutes of the May eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Mayor Proten?
I made a motion to approve the May eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Aldo Plasios?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We got you arguing like way. And good evening. Let me get to tell you good evening. All right, agenda item seven, we have a presentation that I am super excited for. Aldo Plasios, thanks. Public York, thank you. I skipped right over that one. I was excited about the mural, guys. They've got a painting right there that I'm so happy to unveil. So we will move on to public comments, remembering that you are only allotted three minutes to speak, and a timer will be placed up on the screen for your company to tell it, you know, so we won't have to interrupt your time. Um, we only have one person signed up for public comments, and that's Miss Deirdre Parker. Please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Deirdre Parker. I am complaining again about the debris that's on one forty-six Chapel Hill Road. It has been there since March. I brought it to you all's attention here in the Unity for Prosperity at the Town of Spring Lake, North Carolina. And I would like to know when something is actually going to be done about it. You know, and I thank you so much. I believe my three minutes is up. Moving forward.
All right, we will now move on to our presentation. We have an art mural by the Spring Lake Affairs and Sustainability Committee.
Now, actually, well, we're gonna put it up on the easel, but that's fine.
So please take your time.
Mayor Board of Almen, I'd like to introduce, I'm sure you already know, our chairman, Mr. Sullivan, co-chair Cynthia Wilt, our other members are Mr. Bryant and myself.
And at this time, we want to thank you all, but I am extra excited, and I know the citizens here in this great town of Spring Lake are excited. But first of all, I want to thank each and every individual of the commission. Mr. Dickenhoff as well, and the presentation. We are here tonight to educate, to let you all know exactly it's not just a mural popped out of nowhere. It took some hard work, hard diligent work, us coming together, meetings of the minds, to make sure this will come to fruition. So at this time, Mr. Dickenhoff?
Well, our goal tonight, as Chairman Sullivan said, is to reinforce our relationship with Fort Bragg and to uplift city pride with visual arts that emphasize our support of our nation's armed forces. The mission will be to have this commission organize, plan, conduct, and evaluate a community-wide mural arts program with knowledge, approval, and support of the town's governmental agencies. You'll hear tonight from Mrs. Wilt about the project where we're at today. There's lots more work to be done, but we thought at this point in time, our chairperson, Mrs. Sullivan, felt that it was important to get the board involved so that you knew what we were doing in this particular effort. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilt.
And I'm going to continue on with the story of how we got to this spot. So in the spring of twenty twenty-two, this is when we first started talking about the mural. It was the first time that it was in our committee meeting agenda. And it was also brought to our attention that we had an allocation from the Arts Council. So we started looking into the allocation. We contacted Sarah Busman, who is the contact person for this allocation, and she gave us guidance, and she reviewed what we were looking at and doing the mural as a project, and she said, yes, that is a perfect example of what we could use the grant for. So that's what we did, and the deadline for this grant is June fifteenth. We have to do a report. And then after that, June thirtieth is the absolute last day that we could spend any of these funds. So there's a lot of work involved and a lot of funds and different things required to do a mural. So we looked to Sanford. Sanford has almost fifteen murals that they have set up within the last ten years. And so Liz Whitmore, the planner there, we got together with her, and she gave us some instructions. She even came here and gave a presentation about their murals. Chris Dalton is one of their artists that they use on a regular basis. She gave us guidelines, guidelines from an artist's point of view. And this here is what our mural presentation is going to be. And we had that, yes, we had to review, yes. We reviewed all the other submissions, and we reviewed and edited the original submissions to come up with this submission, and this is what we're going to be doing. Now, we did a site selection. We have had a slight change in our site selection. One oh eight North Main is currently not available, not able to be used as a site. So our next option that has recently been approved was one oh two North Main, which one oh two North Main is the Attitude House. So some of you are familiar with that location. So in addition to that, we want to develop a list of businesses that are interested in having a mural put on their area. So in order to do a list, they can present their information to any of our committee members or send it to Deanna. Deanna is, her email is deerosario@townofspringlake.com. And so on that, we would need name, we would need point of contact, we would need phone number, address, we would need that kind of information, anybody who is interested in that. So if you know anybody, they can send their information, and we'll start up a list. We also started engaging our, we use the RFP to engage artists, and the RFP, we specifically said we only wanted North Carolina artists. So that's what we're going with, artists that lives out in North Carolina. And we also put it in the North Carolina Arts Council bulletin to get North Carolina artists, and we put it on the website for the Town of Spring Lake. Now, the artist that we chose, this was his final presentation after the edits. His name is Max Dowd, D-O-W-D-L-E. Kind of a different name, so. So the mural is tentatively scheduled to be completed in the fall. So because we're waiting for a little bit, not so hot weather, but the absolute last day is November the tenth is our final deadline. So we're looking for the fall. After it is completed, we are planning on doing a dedication ceremony. Those details are pending after, we know when he's going to be completed. And we will invite different people, significant people from Fort Bragg that are interested in coming as well as the board whenever we get those details finalized. And just so you know, there is a maintenance plan within the contract. It could be five to ten years, depending on how the contract is worked out. There will be UV, anti-UV protection, anti-graffiti coating on it. So, and the artist has agreed that he will be coming to do maintenance on it if needed, as needed, and those details will be worked out in the contract. We're also looking for future funding sources, future sponsors, and also ways of increasing funds. One option that Sanford uses is they auction or raffle off the initial painting. So that could be something that we could work to, and we're still working on a plan on how all these things are going to work out. This is a work in progress. We're working each step, and we've got a lot of these guidelines from Sanford and from the Arts Council. So anybody that's wishing to donate, we will be developing a plan to receive donations. We're working with the town, we're working, Mr. Doctor DeCrock, he will be also helping with that space. And when we do receive donations, anyone who donates a thousand dollars or more, we're gonna notice, we're gonna do some kind of a notice on the paint, not directly on the painting, but a plaque or maybe off to the side, something that designates the company or individuals who did an extra donation. So right now, we're in the process of preparing the wall. Mr. Bryant will be doing some power washing for us on that wall and getting it all ready for the priming that will come, which will set up things for getting the priming done. And then right now, we're finalizing the contract. We're finalizing the details for payment and details for mural, and all of that is being worked on with the finance department, Deanna, and different town staff here. And at this time, we're open for questions. And, uh, she has one thing she wanted to say.
Talking about the finances that I stated to the board, any finances or donations that we receive has to go through the town, filter through the town. So the LGC, as well as our attorney, we've asked him to look at. Everything has to go through the LGC. And for future reference, these mirrors would not just be on Main Street. We wanted the bridge to be our first selection. And I received a call and asked me, how did we come up with this? Want to thank Mr. Dickenhoff. We wanted to make sure, because we're a military town, we wanted to tie the military into the civilian side of this as well. And so with us coming together and knowing that we're a military town, active, and retired, that's how we came up with this. We thank Mr. Dickenhoff because I learned something with the planes and the airplanes. The original we had, he said that the airborne does not jump out of certain aircrafts, and that he can explain that. So, and really want to thank each one of us, and we are a military town, and we represent the military well, and we're proud of our military active and retirees. But the money will have to go through the LGC's any donation.
Well, I definitely want to give you all a round of applause. This is a huge time.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you guys ask any questions, if you have any questions other than congratulations and thank you, you know, I just want to recommend or commend this committee also. You know, they really spent the majority of their meetings talking about this project and only because it's so new to Spring Lake. Spring Lake doesn't have an art project like this. So they really spent a lot of time, and Mr. Bryant put in some physical work so far on this. And then we got hit with some bad news that ended up turning into great news today. You know, one property owner kind of backed out because they didn't want to be the first, and that's okay. But the second property owner that we had as a backup, they are honestly going to be a great, you know, location for this, to publicize this. It's great for Spring Lake. So, and so this staff, I mean, this committee, these volunteers, I should say, have put a lot of work in. Cynthia Wilt, she kind of got this, spearheaded this, ran with it. And, you know, there were obstacles, there were learning curves, and she just used a lot of resources to kind of get the right information out there. And then the rest of the staff, they just got behind her. They didn't give her a hard time, you know. It could have went south, it could have went left easily because you're talking about something so new for our town. And we're still working out through the kinks, you know, with finances and all that. So that's a given. But I wanted to make sure that they all got a picture behind this work right here because all of them deserve the credit, and, you know, they've done a great job, so. Let's do that first. So if we can.
Do you want to use the thing? And you guys should stand behind the stand, that way we can have it.
Only get on here.
Well, it's kind of crooked on the easel. Well, Deanna, you made me do better easel.
Everybody come in front. Well, you need to center. Can you center it? Yes.
Who's photo op from the audience? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, guys. Oh, it's the picture part. This part is done, but don't move because we still got to.
We want to talk.
So again, congratulations. This is phenomenal. You guys, you're the first major change that's coming to us physically in a fair long time. This is huge. This is monumental, quite job. So my first and pretty much only question is, where's that going to be stored? Because we got a newly remodeled receptionist area that that looks phenomenal in until it's auctioned off to its permanent home.
We're, I don't think she worked that out.
Have you guys really discussed that yet? We can discuss it?
Absolutely. I mean, just attend for, and not that way of like constant advertising. We'll have somebody saying we'll make sure it stays nice and clean and, you know, get everybody enticed about what's coming. I mean, new art with new art in the lobby.
That's a good point.
So I think you'll find we'll get it nicely framed so that as people look at it and it's displayed, they'll say, this is worth me trying to be part of Spring Lake history.
Love it.
So we'll get it nicely framed and then present it to the town for, for handing.
Awesome.
But this big, the big part here is, and I suspect the questions that are going to come up is, all right, in your contract, you know what the number is. How are we going to get to the number? We talked early tonight to the town board, knowing that this is going to have to be a mutual project associated with LGC, the town, the board, and the commission. But we're hopeful as we generate mailings to different places that we think would be a usable asset, things like the Military Affairs Council. We'd be glad, in my opinion, to back something like this. We're hopeful that we can get your signatures and approval on the things that we're doing to give us credibility in our asking for. And then we need your lawyer, and we need your finance director to be able to bring these funds together for use, not only for this project, but also as we put out our mailings and we say, not only are we doing this, but we also want to show you other locations and other themes. We talked about, you know, the Eighteenth Airborne Corps and the patch for the Eighteenth Airborne Corps. We talked about Special Operations in the Anisov Museum. We talked about Army Airfield, Simmons Army Airfield, the fact that we've got lots of aviation assets. But Spring Lake has always been a better community in support of Fort Bragg and Eighteenth Airborne Corps, and now Special Operations, that we think this will be something that a lot of people will be, hopefully, glad to put their name behind, and we're hopeful that we'll start with you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Dickenhoff, can you please tell us so the citizens will know the final cost of this mirror? Is it twelve thousand five hundred? Twelve thousand five hundred will be completed. That's why we're getting four thousand donated, and that's why we have to raise the rest of the money. But it is twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So I know the municipal arts allocation is recurring. That's four thousand dollars that the town receives already.
Yeah, four thousand this, this.
But this is this year.
Four thousand next, hoping next year.
It's automatic allocation.
There are quarterly grants that you are bringing to our attention.
Yep. T-Mobile? Funding? Funding, I think it's both. Right.
I was going to say, at our league and municipalities conference, we talked about Intimac as well, and I think some of us are going to their conferences September, but we can always reach out and forward. And I know Walmart has a community grant, and they do give funding to the town, to towns and cities, and also T-Mobile has a community grant as well. And I'm glad the chairman.
That would be awesome because we will just take that information. We already have planned on doing the mini grants with the Arts Council.
Yeah, if you give her an idea, she's going to chase it down.
T-Mobile offer up to fifty thousand.
It's great.
We're going to the bridge. We're going to the bridge.
Orders need you all in the contingency state to allocate for us. So we got all those funds out there, we have the knowledge, and we're working together. That's what we should look for. So again, thank you all very much this time.
I also do want to say, thank each and every one of you all for all the work. I'm excited. I've seen other cities with murals, and they look fantastic. Virginia Beach has, Virginia has a lot of them, and they're beautiful. And that's what I hope we can one day be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I say that he has done a couple of Virginia Beach? Oh, yes, artist that we have, he has done a lot of murals in many places. And I do have a sample of his artwork that he has done in other places if he wants to see the quality of work that he does.
Yeah, he does great. He's worked with a lot of other municipalities doing that. He's worked with the Marine Science Department for UNC. He has a fabulous, I mean, awesome mural there on that building, Durham Art Council. And so he's really a good, a good resource. And he said, if this goes well, he'd be happy to do another one for us if we had.
Good.
So, and then as far as the finances, you know, a lot has been going on with it, right? And recently, and so there's been a lot of back and forth with the finance department about making sure we do it the right way, you know. And so the town managers offered a lot of assistance with that behind the scenes. So it's, other than this committee behind the scenes, we got the finance department giving us the right direction. The LGC is included in that as well, so. But anyway, thank you again.
Just a couple things. I didn't want you to sell yourself short because you're part of this too. You named all them, but you didn't do yourself. Because one time they called me in here and, out there in the audience, if you guys don't know how hard these people work for you, you'd be surprised because I walked in here, because they were asking me about, I don't know what it was about, but they had four or five, maybe six of these things out here laid out. And the chatter that was going back and forth was just, I mean, it was, it was hard. Hard act. It was really, really a good sign.
Very educational.
Yeah, I mean, they were just going, yeah, this because of this, you can't have this because of this. It was just going really back. So if you don't think they worked hard to pick out this one, you'd be wrong because they really did a good job of this. And like I said, just thank you for that, and I'll keep working with you to get this thing paid for.
Yeah, and the goal is, even if we get, let's say it's twelve five, right, for this cost, if we get fifteen thousand, the goal is that this goes towards another project and carries over and continues to carry over so we can keep bringing this to Spring Lake.
And we talked about it at the beginning. We want to always make sure the citizens are involved because they, we take their ideas as well. So we want to also make sure they always involve. If they have an idea of anything, we want to make sure that the citizens, you know, just let us know. We've invited them, they can come out to our meetings when we have these murals of future reference, and we listen to them as well.
I'm sure you guys are going to get a lot of input now that it's here, now that you can see it. It's not a talk anymore, it's here. So I know your activity is going to spur, really going to. This is a conversation piece, and it's starting a good conversation in Spring Lake.
I want to thank Jamie for doing an article for us this morning.
Yes.
And now she's the big shot.
And then also to emphasize that the money is not coming out of town because I see a lot of people thinking that it's not costing the town anything. It's not coming from the town's fund, so let that be known.
But even if it did.
I was going to say LGC.
Let's shoot for fifty and pay for our next project before it even gets off the ground.
Let's be fruitful, and that'll multiply.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And that was good, we had some additional time.
Yeah, I did tell them, let's limit it to fifteen minutes. I'm okay with it, right?
No, but we have a few extra minutes. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a brief fifteen minute recess. The LGC did let us know that they are on their way here, and they'll be here within the next fifteen minutes. So we will resume reconvening at six forty-five. So we will resume reconvening at 6:45.
So this is an item that you need for lots of reasons, fire protection and just kind of meet the safety standards that you go by. Um, this, this truck, the chief and staff are going to go assess it, but I looked at pictures too. It looks to be a really good shape, eighteen thousand miles, um, has ten years, it makes ten year loans, so it has ten years life left in it. It's a real good opportunity to get that fire protection the town needs at a pretty moderate cost of something. Cause a new one costs a lot, do you, do you mean?
Yeah.
Um, replace some radios, got some turnout here. We, we looked at things that were essential for staff safety as well as service, uh, police, uh, pending tank vehicles. You have to lease the next year, got some new radios, some radars, so your boats slow down. Uh, black cops for vehicles. So, um, streets, mountain high wheel, we funded a dump truck and a John Deere mower. Revenue billing, they're getting new handhelds, they have clean handhelds that are calling.
Better held together with duct tape.
Yes. Replace some of the meters, um, you know, that's really important, the meters are just like your cash register. The older they get, the slower they go, so you're losing revenue because it's really probably, the oldest ones don't really use the management water that accurately. Um, water operations for many excavator, replace some trucks, a truck. Sanitation, you know, you get two drought trucks, one of them, uh, is number fifteen. Well, it's been repaired sort of often, I don't know how many few we've seen, so it doesn't speak to item, but one that is well used and needed, so replacing that.
That's Deborah Mack's favorite item.
Yeah. But Deborah Mack is kind of talked us into doing the Adobe Pro that really helps with documentation and routing. Um, most importantly, just by all bits and pieces, replacing freezers. Y'all are at a huge risk for a failure, but that's, it's really good that we're getting these servers in here, um. Their needs, the other ones just obsolete. So the yellow box, we, we know you want to do financials, but right now is probably not the time to delve into that. Cause that, we need to get some stability, even for our staff and the ledger before you delve into getting the financial software. I mean, what, what you've got now is, is working, um, but it's not, it's not the most efficient. So when all is said and done, out of the, out of that talk, the, the bonuses at the top, you see what that is. Um, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So you started with three, three million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand in the ARPA funds. And after these purchases, there'll be one point six six five remaining. Um, a lot of that sitting in the general fund, but the general fund was able to, to satisfy the, the interfund loan owed to utilities. So that won't be a hindrance applying for state debt. I think it's a really good story. So wait, the whole thing.
Good story.
Um, the, the fact that we, we paid off that interfund loan, uh, if you want to borrow money from the state or get a grant. Their, their rule is, you know, it's not illegal for the, the water sewer utility to send money to the general fund. But if it subsidizes it, that's a big no-no. So the state says, well, it's, it's not against statute, but if you want to borrow money, you can't do that now or in the past. So there, there's one town in west North Carolina that is, is having to unwind about eight million dollars. They sent the utilities to build a park and they knew what was happening when they did it. And they were pretty belligerent about it, but they're, they're not so belligerent now. But anyway, Spring Lake is now square between the fines as far as interfund loans. Um, so when the time comes to, to go to DEQ, um, to borrow money for any kind of utility purpose. You won't have any issue shaking that box off.
This is phenomenal. This is phenomenal.
Back to Alvin. I'm putting her through the workout from that.
I'll work today.
So my conclusion, if you always do what you always have done, you always get what you always got. Spring Lake has changed the way it serves citizens and doing it for the better, it would be commended. So next we look forward to helping you, uh, get an approval of a good fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. That will be a roadmap for continued improvement for elected officials, staff and citizens of the town of Spring Lake.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Any question?
Thank you, thank you to the staff, thank you to the diligence of our, uh, intern town manager. You guys are phenomenal, um, Spring Lake would not be here, and I've said this, uh, over and over again, publicly and privately. We would not be where we are without the LGC. Um, I know there was a lot of frowns and grunts and groans about them coming in and taking over control of our finances, but they saved our town. Um, they came back in here, they took so many leaks, um, reset so many, uh, reset balance in so many areas. Uh, I, I can't thank you enough. I am so glad that we got to spend, uh, these two years learning from the LGC, almost two years. Uh, learning from the LGC on how to properly do things. Spring Lake, um, has a level of stability it hasn't had in a very long time. And so I'm very, very grateful to you, to your staff, to our staff and our, uh, management here, to the audit committee and their diligence. Um, Spring Lake, it's a new day for us, it is now time to do things to do Spring Lake way, so thank you so much.
And it, it has been a team effort and we appreciate the, the good communication and the cooperation and people just being willing to listen.
Yeah.
But it's, it's producing good results.
Yes, it is. Alvin McCouper?
Thank you, thank you so much, um, Mr. Irwin, uh, for this. I had a couple of questions, what was the part of funds for, who said that was?
Part of, or it's an acronym, it's mostly some kind of parks grant.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly which one.
Okay, and, um, you mentioned the financials and the servers. Um, the Nokonah League, uh, has, uh, some programs and because we're on the UAL unit assistance list. We're eligible to get some of that, to get that free accounting software and free help with cybersecurity. Right. So, um, I, I'm, I'm glad that was the other, cause hopefully that'll, um, some come, you know, that'll come back soon. And the other thing you said, budget amendments, we, can we start receiving those?
Yes.
You know, this, these things started dropping, I'm getting phone calls, I had no idea. And the last thing I want to be, the last thing I want to do as a government official to say, I don't know. And I had to say it quite a few times, so if there is any way, you know, we can get this fired to the happening. So that, um, I don't want anybody else to have problems, and I was like, what are you talking about? So, but I, I appreciate the work you all are doing, I'm so happy we all really are, I wasn't upset the LGC came, so, uh.
I wonder what she's got in mind.
But thank you so much.
I can have one more question.
Uh.
Um, the grant funding, uh, that we didn't collect money, it was that, tell me a bit about the, the grant funds that weren't collected? Or have they been collected since then?
I, I think the, well, Deborah Mack found a little part of grant and one other, they just weren't billed. Um, back that period of time, like twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there, there was work done and all they had to do was, was kind of send in documentation and fill it. And it, it went done, it was one receipt.
Is there any way you can bill now and possibly?
That's, that's something we probably should have asked, was, yes.
Thank you.
It's a quick ask, but you know, grants have a time period and the grant doors, they've got a window of opportunity.
Right.
So they might have redesignedated the money.
Ask at least just to see, maybe, they'll have mercy on this, all good boxes filed by our attorney.
All right, thank you mayor, um, thank you David and thank you to staff, the LGC as well as our contracted staff and our town staff. Who have been learning a new way and working cohesively with the LGC and our finance staff. Uh, a common theme I'm hearing tonight is stability, you know, we've got, you know. I don't think you could have said it any better, right? I don't think you could have given us a, any better form to say how great of a job that the town is doing with its finances now. But it's important that we get stability. And, you know, I remember, and I'm going to say this, and so please don't take this the wrong way, anybody. Cause what town wants the state to come in and take over its finances because it's so dysfunctional? But because of all the people that kind of, you know, whether it was staff or board members or whatever, citizens. That got the LGC and state auditors attention to say, hey, look, this is what's happening in Spring Lake, we need your attention, that happened. And I remember one of the key things during, uh, the time I was running to be on this board. I remember, uh, the mayor saying, it's a good thing the LGC is here, and she kept saying that, and I was like, what are you talking about? It's not a good thing, but it's, she meant that the future, that the future was going to, it was going to be good for the Spring Lake future. That the LG stepped, C stepped in and it took some hiccups and some road blocks, you know, um, but we, we're finally here, right? To the point where we've got some stability. The other thing is though, when it comes to stability is that we don't want the state to be here forever, you know? And we're not going to have the contracted staff that we have doing such hard work. I know you said Deborah Mack is on vacation, but she responded to an email, I saw several emails from her today.
Absolutely.
You know, and so it's, we're not always going to have that expertise, um, until, you know, we're getting our ducks in a row, right? But, uh, we're not always going to have that, and so we're going to have a time where we get that ourselves. Where Spring Lake figures out the right roadmap and gets there ourselves.
Yes.
And so the important thing is the theme, which is stability. We're here, we're doing great, we got what, eight million dollars in the bank right now for us at the end of April. And, you know, the, the general fund, I know that includes other funds, but the total bank account, I think is around eight million. Is that accurate based on this report?
Eight plus the ARPA is like.
Eight plus the ARPA, and so, and, and so some of that's been spent, but anyway. We're talking about a whole different town here.
Yeah.
You know, that got us through this period of watching what we're doing, watching what we're spending. And so I'm sorry to get on the soapbox, but I needed to say some of that stuff because I want people to recognize where we came from and where we are just now. And so just keep that in mind, please. Um, positive pay, I saw it on your chart, you know, it's one thing I keep asking and positive pay for people who don't know. Positive pay is something that the bank offers so that anytime you write a check, another check can't be, it can't be cash unless the bank knows that we wrote that check. We had a lot of checks being cashed here in Spring Lake to the tune of half a million dollars or more. That were not written legitimately and the bank was cashing. So having positive pay, which is right now being manually done, is a, an important part of making sure we don't have mismanagement of funds. But I did see that we're still in the process of getting that set up, which is, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, the ARPA update that you gave us, what date was that good through? On that form right there, was that until, the ARPA update with the, you know, this expenditure, was that until April thirtieth?
That's correct.
That's the last.
You had it today, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, one thing on there that wasn't talked about were bonuses to our town staff that we were able to do.
It's, it's.
Uh, I know, what I mean is the specifics, so was there a general amount that was sent to all town staff or was it based on security or how was that based?
If you want to give a name, basically the way we did it was public safety, about a certain amount, and then everybody else ended up getting a, a, a little bit lower amount.
Got it.
Because you know, it was public, blah, 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 blah.
All right, thank you.
And it was per red.
And it was curated for the time worked during that window, during the campaign?
The way we did it was, we did, in fact, had everybody that was, had something to do with anything. You know, like I said, with public safety, who's out there during COVID, and plus just putting up with this last two years, and, you know, we were in a really bad shape. And that's what it really boiled down to. So we've had a lot of people call, and they're like, hey, where's my check? But they don't work here anymore. So it's local, I mean, it's the people that still work here that did stay here with us is the ones that got the votes. You might have been here during COVID. It's really, it's not like COVID money we got back, this is an ARPA money, but it's more fall of thunder. You stayed here the last two years with us, you just stuck in there with us, and so we rewarded you for hanging in there and appreciate what you've done so far, and remember the town.
So other than that, I just wanted to, again, commend everybody, you know. And when I say everybody has to relearn the way we conduct business and do our finances here in town, one example is the amount of regulation that there is to watch how money is being spent. And so I was on a couple of emails talking about the art mural that we were talking about tonight, and it's just not, okay, well, here's the money, let's go do it. It's not like that. You know, I don't want people to think, and that's just an example, but that's every department that's being done. None of it's just willy-nilly. And so you gotta be asking the tough questions, and you do have to have people in finance that are making sure, okay, I know these sound like a lot of hoops you gotta jump through, but there's a reason we gotta do it the right way. And one of the reasons is, as you mentioned, you know, when you're talking about infrastructure grants that need to be done in the future, you know, you have to have your ducks in a row. And so I appreciate you sharing that information about making sure the water sewer fund was paid back. I mean, when you, I remember when we first got on here and you shared that with us, that you got one point, I believe it was 1.8 million. Yeah, 1.8 million dollars that you were talking about, it was like, we got, not only are we already in the hole, and they're saying it's gonna take six years for us to clear this hole.
Seven years.
Seven years. I'm sorry, I'm too conservative. I mean, anyway, so seven years to clear that hole. And then on top of that, you gave us the news of 1.8 million dollars you gotta pay back on top of that. I mean, that's a huge, we're in a different place right now. So if you see a lot of smiles, audience, I mean, please know that this is through a lot of work and a lot of headaches, and this is, a lot of people weren't prepared for this, you know, and so we're getting better, though.
One of the first things I did when I started working on Spring Lake, Sharon Edmondson asked me to work on cash flow because your total bank balance, a little, less than two years ago, was about 1.6 million.
Yes.
It was all. So it's amazing what happens when you line the shop, you know.
1.6 million, you said. So 1.6 million, and here we are today.
Over 12 million.
Around 12. And, I mean, when was that? That was, that was when you first stepped in, in October of '21?
It was in the fall.
Yeah.
So it hasn't been a full two years yet?
That's a huge difference. And, you know, at that same time, we were borrowing money from other funds, like the water sewer fund, to even make, I mean, when the management is wrong, you know, and you have the wrong staff or the wrong leaders and the wrong board, you know, a lot can have, you know, an impact on that, and so.
You make cuts to live within your means, and it's true.
Yeah, it sounds simple to a lot of people who balance their checkbooks, right? But, yeah, it's a whole lot different when you can't see, like, we got millions of dollars here in Little Spring Lake, you know. It's not anything to take lightly, and we're not through yet. The state is still here.
Yes.
But this is a big, big victory, you know, and we got a good report last month, of course, as well. Thank you.
Alderman Clawsy was much upon this earlier in this beginning, but can you just explain, as the town attorney, I want to know for the board and for the citizens, how much of the agreement with the LGC, with Spring Lake, does the LGC deem completed, if you know, how much longer, as much as we enjoy having you down?
We do need to amend that fiscal accountability agreement. I thought I was gonna get it done, but we're, we're kind of late with some of this cleanup work's done, so we get a really good picture where we are toward the year end 2023. And then we can make a, we'll have some discussions about how much longer you wanna put up with.
So is it possible that this could be completed this calendar year, or not this fiscal year?
I think that's a possibility. I think it's getting through the two audits is a crucial act. The 22 audits is about to start. That'll take probably longer than the 2023 audit. But if we can get both of those done by year end, that will be a big challenge.
Will we get a graduation ceremony?
You all paid for it?
Right. Don't leave it, of course.
We'll get the chief to cook some hot dogs.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Awesome. Are there any other questions from the board? Alderman Lackman, did you just turn your light on? Okay. Alderman Lackman, did you have anything? We can't hear. Is our volume turned up?
Can you hear me, Alderman Lackman?
If you have a comment, just put your thumb up. It's not thumbs down.
We can't see your thumb.
Alderman Lackman, can you hear me?
Alderman Lackman, we can hear you now.
You said no questions.
Okay, no questions. There we go.
All that for that.
We give everybody the platform this week. We got you, sir. Awesome. Well, thank you so much. Please continue to bring us good news because we'll continue to do the hard work. Thanks. Who pops out their financial update? Spring Lake, when you do a comeback like that? Awesome. Okay, well, we'll quickly go through our mayor report and our board members' report, and then we will go ahead and give you guys, oh, we got B? Okay, AB. So it was customary throughout the town before that after the budget was prepared, we would take the July, be the first meeting in July off. We didn't do it last year, of course, because we were in such a dire financial position that we did not have the only way to take any meetings off. However, after you just heard that amazing update from the LGC and all of the hard work that our staff and board members have put in, I would like to ask the board if we would consent to canceling our first meeting in July just as a break, a breather, some time off. So I will entertain a motion. Alderman Cooper?
I make a motion that we cancel the July 10, 2023 meeting.
Alderman Thompson?
I second.
Any discussion? Alderman Lackman, if you have any discussion, put your hand up. High, because we can only see the top of your head. Okay, you have discussion. I'm gonna call you because we're having issues with the sound, so just pick up your phone.
Yes, Mayor, depending on what we've got going on, I'm not in favor of canceling the meeting. I'm more in favor of continuing with our meetings.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, I'm gonna leave you on so you can be a part of the motion.
Yeah, I'm okay with losing this vote, but I'm gonna vote may.
Well, I was gonna say, if we could change the motion to if any pressing business arises, we would call the meeting.
I like that. Would you all be in favor of that?
Yeah, but then I can't vote may.
So can we go ahead and amend the motion on the floor to include?
I'd like to amend the motion to cancel the July 10, 2023 meeting unless there's pressing issues on the table, and then we will come together, whatever we're doing. We call it a special meeting, or just, yes, we just call it a special meeting.
So the motion stays at that, just for clarity's sake. We will cancel the Monday, July 10 meeting in case, or, and call it a special meeting in case needed. That was a little choppy, but all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We got you. Any info, that was unanimous. So motion carries to cancel the July meeting. I'm gonna hang up now. For our July 10 board meeting, in case something, or if something else happens, we'll call a special meeting. All right, now we move on to our mayor's report. So we had some, in the past two weeks, we had a chance to do a lot of training. Myself, Alderman Cooper, Ms. Carly, and Ms. Renee from our Water Revenue were all able to attend a viable utilities education workshop. It was a phenomenal way to understand how our enterprise funds, or how, excuse me, that department is working, how stormwater operates. It taught us the cycles of how things work within that department from learning about towns that had wooden pipes, like literal pipes made out of wood. But these are infrastructure issues that are facing, you know, not just here in Spring Lake, but across our country. And so learning about the intricacies and details of that entire department and how they function was phenomenal. Very educational, and, and one thing I took away from that training is the fact that I believe most of our residents want to pay their water bills. They don't want to, you know, just not pay. But if we can find a way to work with the community to, although our revenues are looking great, we could, you know, beef up that 83% in collection to 93% in collection if we can find some ways to maybe incentivize or work with the community to help them, help us, help them. I also had a chance to meet with Colonel Will Cox. He's now hosting a monthly mayor's update with the Cumberland County mayor, so that was really, really good to now again be bridging those gaps with Fort Bragg. That was one of the commitments we made as a board was to pledge to rebuild our connections outside of our municipality, and this is one way that we can engage our military counterparts. I attended the Rulaq meeting, so this is affecting Spring Lake. Things that are affecting Spring Lake right now is the fact that Fort Bragg wants to, or they are discussing changing their flatline compatibility rating system. Right now it's at about 1,000 feet, and they want to increase this to 3,000 feet. What that does, that affects the property line in Spring Lake. This was once property that we owned. We do not own it anymore. But the, they'll be involved in, or they'll keep us updated on what's happening with the expansion if they'll be bringing that into the town of Spring Lake. So that is all I have for right now. I will move on to you, Mayor Proton.
I don't have any updates at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. I might as brief. I am going to be attending, I just registered yesterday, a North Carolina Military Defense Summit. As you mentioned previously, that the Nokanalee was going to expand our host communities coalition. And so to that point, we need to be more involved. We need to bring more resources back from the military to support our community. So I, I'm not sure who else is gonna go, but I know I thought it was important. It's gonna be in Raleigh in September, and I thought it was important that we had, that we saw what they had to offer and make sure they know, continue to know who we are, and we have a place to sleep there.
Yes, awesome. Alderman Clawsy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna remind everybody that on June 2nd, it's gonna be Fort Liberty now.
Yes.
And we're going to the unveiling, I think, quite a bit of this board is going.
I believe all of us are going.
Oh, great. And so Spring Lake will be represented on this historic event, whether you like the name change or not, so that'll be good. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, I did, I did wanna say, the stormwater team, Water Department has been working on, what, PD?
Yes.
So all those residents, that's the mayor's street address, by the way, that's why I threw her name in there. But they found what looked like, somebody commented on Facebook, a Christmas tree in the sewer line. It's bad. I think it's called a football. Root ball.
A root ball, a football?
Sorry. No, it's on my mind. Other than that, though, so I just wanted to let those residents over there know that work was being done over there. You'll see it, obviously, when you drive through there, but to have that flooded area that constantly gets flooded cleaned out. And so they're working there, and they've got plans to work in Deerfield and, I'm sorry, Good Year. And so anyway, I just wanted to let the residents be aware of that.
Awesome. Yes, we've got a new roller, and they are paving paddles. So stay tuned. We're coming to your streets soon. Alderman Thompson?
The only thing I have is cops for conversation will be here at 6:00 PM this Thursday night. So if you wanna come out and participate and come in, bring a guest as well, so the more Mary spread the word. That's all I have.
Awesome. You reminded me. We all have coffee. Lunch? Yeah, let's talk lunch. I've met the name of every single time. Wednesday at KBD's, 12:00 PM. Oh, Alderman Lackman, via Carly Autry.
On behalf of Alderman Lackman, the Military and Veterans Advisory Committee is tomorrow at 6:30 in this boardroom. The Memorial Day Ceremony is at 11:00 AM Friday at Veterans Park. And then the next cleanup is Saturday, June 3rd, 8:00 AM, and meeting at South Williams Plaza.
And those were Alderman Lackman's updates? Great. Now we got your thumbs. We can see them now. Tom Andrew?
No, I don't have a whole lot. Just one thing is, thanks for the employees. You guys, you guys are killing, man. You're really doing a, doing a good job. That goes to everybody. Just keep up what you're doing. David, thank you for working with me, keeping me where I need to go. That's a big help. And Deborah Mack is a rock star, man. I mean, this, I mean, she gets like too out of her sleep trying to fix all this stuff, so I mean, she really, every time I talk to her, she sounds so tired. And then she had all these health things, so I would just thank her again. And all the teams here, just, they do a great job keeping us straight and clear with our, with our funds. So just thank you guys again for everything y'all were doing.
I'll be very brief. The mayor's actually looking through a few matters. I'm learning those I haven't cracked about. Just saying that publicly because we don't have a closed session. Just wanted to get that out there, and then just in the spirit of the good news we got tonight, hopefully this will be the last calendar year of the LGC. It's hard to believe.
Yeah.
It's been about a year since I first heard from Jared Durham, CEO of policy, interested in about 10 months since I started to come on board. And unless these aldermen are getting some secret funds, none of them, I just want the town citizens to note, none of them are doing this to be rich, and they go very, very hard. The mayor and the aldermen work very, very hard, and, you know, Jared Durham worked very hard, and current town manager works extremely hard, probably one of the hardest working men I've ever met. People. That I've ever met, and I'm just really proud to be part of this. And I've lived here almost my whole life, and Spring Lake always gets beat up on, and I'm sure y'all have seen it too. And, you know, I think the board, the mayor, the entire staff of the town should be very, very proud.
Thank you. Awesome. Well, now that we are finished with our reports, I'm waiting for my board to light up with them. Christmas is here. for my board to light up with them. Christmas is here. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn Alderman Cooper.
So moved.
Mayor Proton?
I second.
Any discussion? Nope, never a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Who to thought?